That works. This is a work in the hall. While nobody's talking.
The stream had been reset.
Oh, for upstate Washington.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then to be called, so they just reset it into a couple of measures. Whatever that.
Yeah. You're saying what?
And now I don't know.
Yeah, we can't count.
You can't count those things.
It only counts when we start.
You don't want those?
No, I'm just keeping them away from him.
He's got sticky fingers.
What?
He's got sticky fingers.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Good evening again, everyone, visitors, residents, business owners. I want to say welcome to our regular city council meeting. It is already October. It's October 3rd, 2023. And we started our meeting at 7:00 PM, but due to technical difficulties again, we are a few minutes behind, so excuse us. So we always start our council meeting with the invocation, and then it's led by the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have tonight Dan Zander, a longtime resident that will lead us to, you know, into prayer. We ask you all to stand up, please. Eyes closed, hearts open to this prayer, and then we will go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Amen. Father, we thank you for this day, for this time, for this wonderful counselor we have this evening. We pray for our council members. And we let this meeting go through here, through tonight, so we can do as much as we can do. And we just, we just wanted to get this done so we can spend some time with our families and our friends. And we just want to do that for you, Lord, and just, just let's just do it. And then, and all I ask is things in the name. Amen and amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, and thank you, everyone, that joined in the prayer and also the Pledge of Allegiance. We have three proclamations on our, on our agenda. One is for the Hispanic Heritage Month. That's from September 15th to October 15th, 2023. This will be read by our own city councilwoman, Ms. Cobb Muniz. And also, it will be translated in Spanish. I don't know if this is the first time it has ever been done at a council meeting, but I'm, I'm so excited about that, by her own husband, Pastor Muniz. And I don't know if anyone, if you have a copy of the agenda, you can follow along.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we begin, I just want to say that this proclamation and the one after it tonight are personally important to both of us as we have a direct link to both of these communities. Particularly, I wanted to put it forth in part in remembrance of our aunt, my friend, Dr. Maria Torres Guzman, who, in addition to being a first-generation Puerto Rican doctoral graduate who pioneered multilingual and multicultural education and was a professor emeritus at Columbia University, she was also a breast cancer survivor who subsequently lost her second battle with cancer in 2018. So anyway, I just wanted to say that before we went into the proclamation. Are you ready?
I just want to say that I'm not a professional translator, nor do I play one on TV.
City of East Point proclamation.
La ciudad de East Point proclamación.
Hispanic Heritage Month, September 2023.
El mes de la herencia hispano, septiembre de dos mil veintitrés.
With over, whereas with over 60 million Hispanic Americans residing in the United States.
Mientras hay más de sesenta millones hispanoamericanos viviendo en los Estados Unidos.
Hispanic Americans make up the largest minority group in the nation and have significantly contributed to our government.
Los hispanoamericanos son el grupo minoridad más grande en toda la nación y han contribuido a nuestro gobierno.
Culture and economy over the generations.
La cultura, economía sobre todas las generaciones.
And whereas the Hispanic community in America has made many important advances in areas of law, religion, agriculture, art, music, education, technology, architecture, cuisine, theater, and exploration.
Mientras la comunidad hispana en América ha sido muy importante avanzando en áreas de la ley, religión, agricultura, los artes, la música, educación, tecnología, arquitectura, comida, teatro, y la exploración.
And whereas Hispanic Americans have provided Michigan and the United States with unique social and cultural influences.
Mientras hispanos americanos han contribuido a Michigan y los Estados Unidos con únicos sociales y culturales influencias.
Fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our state and nation.
Fundamentalmente enriqueciendo el extraordinario carácter de nuestro estado y nación.
And whereas Michigan is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent.
Mientras Michigan tiene la fortuna de tener, mientras ellos, una población grande de residentes hispanos y latinoamericanos.
Who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives.
Crecen negocios, tienen ideas innovativos, y enriquecen nuestra economía. Crean trabajos y contribuyen a nuestras vidas diarias.
And whereas the city of East Point, Michigan, is home to a vibrant and diverse population, including many Hispanic Americans who contribute to our community's social, cultural, and economic fabric.
Mientras la ciudad de East Point, Michigan, es su lugar de una comunidad vibrante y diversa, incluyendo muchos hispanos americanos que contribuyen a nuestra comunidad social, cultural, y económica, fábrica económica.
And whereas during this month, Michigan's Hispanic American community will celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month through a series of special events featuring Hispanic history, food, dance, and art, celebrating the rich tradition and many contributions this community has made to the state of Michigan.
Mientras durante este mes, los hispanoamericanos de Michigan y la comunidad van a celebrar la, el mes nacional de la herencia hispano con una serie de eventos especiales con la historia, comida, baile, y artes, celebrando las tradiciones ricos y menas contribuciones a las comunidades que han hecho el estado de Michigan.
And whereas the city of East Point should celebrate and recognize the significant contributions and countless achievements of Hispanic Americans and continue our efforts to acknowledge the challenges they have faced and overcome.
Mientras la ciudad de East Point debería de celebrar y reconocer las contribuciones significantes y también los, uh... I lost the word for achievements. I apologize. Of hispanos americanos y continuar con nuestros esfuerzos para reconocer los riesgos y también las cosas que hemos enfrentado y sobrevivimos.
Now, therefore, the city council for the city of East Point does hereby proclaim September 15th, 2023, to October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of East Point.
Ahora, el Consilio de la Ciudad de East Point declarará y proclama septiembre 15 hasta octubre 15, 2023, como el mes de la herencia hispano nacional en la Ciudad de East Point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I just wanted to say how proud our aunt would be of him because he did that without having the actual literal translation, translation in front of him. So he had to translate on the fly. So excellent job. She was a linguist and believed in making sure that all children were able to express themselves through their language, whether it was English or Spanish. And excellent job. With that, Madam Mayor, can we go to the next proclamation?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask one of the stakeholders in the city of East Point. While not an East Point resident, she is a stakeholder in the city. This is a city that she attends church in, and there are also some East Point residents here who are also survivors. But Renee Miles is a breast cancer survivor. And acknowledging her, I want to acknowledge any other survivors that may be in the room. I would invite you to stand if you are a survivor of cancer or breast cancer and would like to be acknowledged. We just want to celebrate you and celebrate your life. So I know that Sharon Ingram is also an East Point resident and a cancer survivor. And I would also like to honor some other local survivors from around the state of Michigan, including Doris Cobb, Mary Kreiderman, Renee Miles has already been mentioned, Stacy Johnson, Jennifer Freeman, Maggie Houston, and then, of course, Sharon Ingram. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a five-year breast cancer survivor.
Amen.
City of East Point proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, 2023. Whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the incredible fortitude of breast cancer survivors and offer our heartfelt support and prayers to those currently battling this disease. And as a community, we remember the precious lives lost to breast cancer and the families forever changed as a result. And whereas this year, it is estimated that more than 297... I'm sorry. Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than forty-three thousand, seven hundred will die as a result of this terrible disease. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase the awareness about the disease. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, early detention and treatment. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their family and friends who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. And now, therefore, the city council for the city of East Point does hereby proclaim the month of October, 2023, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout this community and urge all women and their families to increase their knowledge about breast cancer and join us to celebrate successes and memorialize those lost battles. Proclaim this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you so much. And breast cancer awareness means a lot to me, the month of October. Breast cancer runs throughout my family and cancer in general. My mother was diagnosed with breast cancer a year ago. And God allowed her to supersede that, so she's also a survivor. I remember when I first thought about running for city council. I mean, I'm sorry, not city council, I was a councilwoman then. I thought about running for the mayor of East Point. And I couldn't wait to tell my grandmother the next day because when I ran for councilwoman, she didn't understand what a councilwoman was. And she was like, "How much do they pay? Why are you doing that? What is this?" And I said, "Well, Grandma, it's not about the money. It's about inspiring other people to do things that they wouldn't have thought about doing." And making sure people are at the table that don't, you know, who usually are not at the table. And she was like, "Okay, I still don't understand it, but go ahead and do it." So she was diagnosed with cancer, and she was battling it for years. And then God put a hold on it, and I was happy because she helped me raise my twin daughters. And then one day she gave me a call. And... She said, "I need to see my grandkids." And I knew it was time. Because that was a different call. She always asks for her grandkids, but this is a different call. I need to see them. So I went to the hospital, bought mine, and I said, "Grandma, I don't want you to die." And she said, "Well, it hurts. I need, I gotta go." And I didn't ask God to, you know, for her to stay. I knew it was time, you know? And though she was sick during the time, I was a councilwoman. The day I was going to tell her I was running for mayor, it was... I had the event here in East Point, and I was going, I announced it to everybody, but I couldn't wait to tell my grandmother because even though she didn't understand half the stuff I did in my life, she always believed in me. So I got a call the next day from my aunt, said she died. Yep. So it kind of disheartened me. I was like, "Lord, do you want me to run for mayor? Was this a sign?", you know? But I knew my grandmother wanted me to keep going, and I did. So I didn't really get to take time out for myself during that time she passed because I was running for the mayor of East Point. But, um... Yeah, so, and my mother's oldest sister died from breast cancer. And my grandfather died from breast, I mean, not breast cancer, but me, I can have breast cancer too, but from cancer as well. And so it's something in my family that just runs. And it doesn't care what color you are, your experience, your background. It don't care. Cancer don't care about anybody. So whoever, man, female, if you're dealing with cancer and you've lost a loved one, my condolences because I understand, trust me. And I thank you for reading that. And I thank you, um, Cobb Muniz, for, you know, bringing the people that, you know, you love up and acknowledging them as well. But those who are dealing with it, prayers to you and make sure that you keep them first and be there when they need them. And whatever they need, give it to them. That's all I'm trying to say. So our next proclamation, and thank you all for letting me express that. I never really said that up here. But my next proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, and we have our fire chief and our firefighters.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, could we ask the firefighters to come right up into the center so everybody can see them?
Yeah, so we can see you.
Smile. Go. Yeah, right in front of us.
Right in front of us.
All right, that's much better.
See, Matt, you should have volunteered to read.
And after he reads it, we're going to ask you all to sing, okay? Or not?
City of East Point proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 8th to 14th, 2023. Whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Effectively serves to remind us that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the city council of the city of East Point, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th to the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week with the theme of Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. And encourage all East Point residents to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week, 2023. To be aware of their surroundings, listen to sound of smoke alarms, learn and practice home fires escape plans, and observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Proclaim this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you for your service, each and every one of you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to say while they are in our hearing, to our fire department, thank you so much for your service, for taking such great care of the residents of the city of East Point. We appreciate your tireless efforts. And to our fire chief, thank you so much for leading this phenomenal group.
Next, we have roll call. Good evening, Ms. Holman.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz.
Present.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Owens.
Here. Next is approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I wanted to let council know that there's an item on the agenda that is there mistakenly. Item D, under new business, approval to proceed with the application for the combination of three adjacent parcels into one property. That is my mistake. I put this on the agenda following the vacating alley procedures, but city council approval is not needed. This is a simple assessing issue with Macomb County as it is private property being combined. There's no public land involved. And this is a property at Aitken Kelly where the use of the property has been processed and approved, special land use approved by both Planning Commission and City Council. So I don't know if the council would like to remove this from the agenda, but I wanted to put that, my mistake out there.
Because I was going to add something. I could remove it because I wanted to add something too. Thank you. I wanted to remove item D and replace it with the discussion for the city manager to receive a 5% raise increase that aligns with the other directors who received theirs in the last budget amendment. Counsel. Do you all want to make another?
I do have a question, I guess, before, before there's, before offering any support. I guess I have a question for, just from a logistical standpoint. I want to make sure that we're not talking about any reopening of a contract negotiation, but simply an increase.
I think it would be an appropriate discussion if the council approves to add it to tonight's agenda. It's simply a discussion. I don't believe that there's going to be a vote. I think it's just, as the mayor proposed, just a discussion.
But if we wanted to vote on it, we could because most discussions, a lot of them have turned into votes too. So if we made a discussion and we want to vote on it, we could too as well. Correct?
I would... I think that it could be a discussion for purposes of tonight's meeting, and I would just leave it at that.
Can we vote on it, though, if we wanted to?
Not having the city manager's contract in front of me, I think that you probably could, but I was, I didn't realize that this was going to be an agenda item tonight. Otherwise, I would have prepared for it.
Okay. So discussion.
I think certainly a discussion can be made in that if the council wants to vote at the next meeting, but I'd like an opportunity just to review the city manager's contract.
Okay. If you all don't want it to be a discussion, we can go and just take this off.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor of, of an increase because I think our city manager has definitely more than, than worked hard for that. My concern is I don't want us to go into renegotiating any contracts. I think if we're only talking about an increase, that's, that's one thing. But I don't want to, want to open a Pandora's box of renegotiating contracts. So that's my hesitation. It's not that I'm not in support of her receiving an increase, but I am concerned that we could possibly open a Pandora's box we don't want to open.
Is, excuse me, I'm just wanting to ask the attorney. Is asking for an increase really just going into the contract or just an increase? It's not changing her, you know, her health benefits or anything like that? Or we're not extending, you know, how long she's going to be here? We're just giving her, because we didn't have to do that with the other directors or anything like that?
Just because of the importance of that, I'd want to review Ms. Walton's contract prior to giving any further advice. But again, just... prior to giving any further advice. But again, a discussion certainly can be conducted this evening.
Okay. If you all don't want to discuss it, we can put it on the next agenda item. And we can go ahead and remove the?
I mean, I'd, I'd be okay with a discussion. I think, I mean, I, Councilwoman Kamunis offers a good point. Uh, maybe discussing it as a bonus as opposed to a raise might keep us in a safe parameter. But for discussion purposes, I think we would be, it's okay just to hear the ideas and then to see. Um, I would follow the city attorney's advice about not making a vote, only because he, you know, his job is to protect us, make sure we don't go down a path we shouldn't go down. So.
Right. Yeah.
But I would support it as, uh, proposed, as a discussion item.
Okay. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Um, right now, I, so, Councilmember Baker, support?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Okay. Um, the hearing of the public, we have one in the beginning and one at the end. We have three minutes. And I usually time you all after you say your name. I don't want to take any time away from you. Okay, the first hearing of the public is now open.
Karen Murray, an East Point resident. I can't get the rest out of the back bag. Um, but this is what happens when the nuisance tenant ordinance is not enforced. And Great Lakes Renaissance Properties has known about this nuisance tenant for, you know, about the last two, three years, and has failed to hold this tenant accountable, who insists on destroying my property. I have sued her twice successfully. She refused to pay damages, which meant I had to do a creditor's exam and garnish her wages. The, um, first garnishment payment was on Friday. She decided she was gonna run over my barberry bush out of spite, retaliation, and she just doesn't have a clue in how to conduct herself as a responsible human being. Um, I'm not putting up with this. And there's always been a question. Are landlords responsible for their nuisance tenants? And, um, the answer is, it depends. It's not a clear yes or no. But when they know that their tenant is a nuisance, and they're interfering with their neighbor's property rights, their rights to quiet enjoyment, and they're destroying their neighbor's property, yeah, they are, they are responsible, because they know and they failed to act. So I am asking the city to finally hold Great Lakes Renaissance Properties responsible for their nuisance tenant. No one, and I mean no one, should have to put up with a nuisance tenant destroying their property. You know what? I'll throw out my age. I'm the very tail end of the boomer generation. I was raised in a generation, if you didn't like your neighbors, you just let them alone. You didn't talk to them. You just ignored them like they didn't exist. That doesn't happen anymore. Now it's all about, I don't like you, I'm gonna do everything I can to be miserable. I'll blast you out. I'll interfere with your property rights. I'll destroy your property. I'll threaten you with violence. I'll do whatever I want to do. And if the law just happens to catch up with me-
Your time is up, ma'am.
I'll con the judge and the police. But thankfully, Judge Galen's too smart for that. And our city-
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
I wish I would have found out about this earlier, so I could have gotten on the agenda, but I didn't. Um, I'm here to educate council on the RTA. I understand that, um, that you got a letter wanting your support. Do not support them. They've been here before. They want you to say, okay, put a rail service right down the middle of, of Grashit. Take out all the trees, have to move all of the utilities that are in there. And you're gonna pay for it. That's the bottom line. Okay? This is their sign, 2018. Okay? We had a vote, yes or no, to have a rail service here in Macomb County. We won. Because of that gentleman sitting right there, Councilman Curly, and myself, we fought them tooth and nail for about four months. We got signs. Any of you people might have seen them. Okay? It was a bad thing right from the get-go. The RTA did not have a plan. I went to a meeting at Macomb County, uh, at the, um, Macomb College, and there were a lot of dignitaries from, um, Macomb. And this gentleman talked for a while about how great the RTA was. And then I started asking him questions. And guess what? He couldn't answer most of them, because he didn't have a plan. And right in the middle of the meeting, he says to me, Mr. Jakubiak, I don't want to answer any more of your questions, because I made a fool of him. And if this ever comes back to a vote, don't vote no, vote hell no. It's a scam. We have public transportation that's called SMART, right? We don't need anything else. And all it's gonna do is raise all of your taxes for nothing. So, uh, I, I'll be back a little later, because I'm probably running out of time. But SMART, not SMART, but the RTA is a scam. And the reason they're coming back is I'll talk about it later.
Thank you.
Good evening. Most of you know me. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Frank Fos, the owner of property 17539 through 17605 Nine Mile Road. I'm here because I have not yet heard anything definitive regarding parking in front of my properties. I am open to negotiating an acceptable parking plan in exchange for waiving the rights to the existing parking. I, I understand that four weeks ago, council met in closed session to approve something. But that has not yet been provided to me. I don't understand why it's taking so long. I want assurances that the city is going to work in good faith to resolve the issues. I'm specifically requesting that council inquire from staff about when I will be receiving the pa, plan and what it generally entails. Thank you again for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mary Hall Rayford, East Point resident. Normally, I would have made this announcement at a neighborhood watch meeting, but we haven't had one. So I'm here tonight to remind the community that we are doing a special event for our first responders on October 15th at the VFW from 12 to 5:00. And if anyone would like to contribute to that effort, I will be there most of the afternoon. So please see me. But we really want our first responders, both fire and police department, to know that we appreciate all they do to keep us safe. Thank you.
Good evening, council and residents. My name is Connor, and I am here on behalf of State Representative Kimberly Edwards. She apologizes she could not attend. She is caught up in Lansing. There's a lot going through the legislature right now. And if you have any questions about that, please reach out to our office. We're happy to enlighten you on all the goings and doings in Lansing right now. But she wanted me to extend an invitation to her community conversations event that will be happening this month, October 19th, uh, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the East Point Memorial Library. And you can come, talk about issues you're having, and talk about your opinions on legislation that may be going through and stuff like that. So please don't, uh, hesitate to reach out. I'll be here for the rest of the meeting as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Saying none. First hearing of the public is now closed. If you didn't get to express your opinion or ideas, you have a chance at the, close to the end of the meeting. Going to, uh, approval of the minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we would receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19th, 2023.
Support. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamunis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any scheduled hearing or unfinished business. So we're gonna go right to reports from administration, starting with our own city manager, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, first, we do still have filters, um, available here at City Hall, DPW, and the library. Um, the library does offer evening hours as well as weekends. Um, and if you haven't gotten a replacement cartridge, DHS recommends that you replace those every two months. Um, so again, if you need a replacement cartridge or a filter, please stop in library, DPW, um, or here at City Hall. Um, with an update on lead lines, um, we have replaced in 2023 close to 440 lead lines. So it's incredible work, um, based on the budget that city council has, um, has accounted for since la, the end of last fiscal year and the start of this fiscal year. The project will start up again in November. Um, but we also received information from Senator Kleinfeld's office regarding the $10 million that she, her and Rep. Edwards advocated at the state level for assistance here in East Point. So we have that information to move that grant process forward, um, to continue replacing those lead lines here in East Point. Um, we do have an election coming up on November 7th. You can register to vote. We have online or here in person. Um, and it's not too late to register if you're interested or fill out an application to be an election inspector. Uh, we are finishing that list now. So if you're interested or interested in signing up to be on our emergency list, um, if we need a replacement, please do so. Um, our salute to excellence with the Chamber of Commerce is coming up this week. Um, I'm not sure if it's announced yet, but we have, um, two incredible members, one from our police department and one from our fire department that will be honored, um, as well as some incredible businesses as well that have invested in the community. Um, so if you haven't reached out to the chamber, um, I'm not certain if they still have tickets available, but I look forward to having that event this, um, this Thursday as well. I'd like to send a thank you to, um, Lions Club. Um, there was a, a significant donation to the fire department in Dorones for the purchase of smoke detectors for homeowners here in the City of East Point. Um, they have been able to purchase over 110, uh, smoke detectors that are now at the fire department. So if you are in need of one, or you know someone in the community that is in need of one, please send them over to the fire department. They do have those available, um, to assist. And, and they can also come out and assist with, with installing them as well. Um, and then, in terms of Nine Mile Road, which I know, um, is a big construction project in ongoing pain, um, and waiting for that to get complete, but it looks, half of it looks incredible, um, on the west side of Grashit. Um, the traffic has swapped over. Um, and so we're looking forward to the other side of, the south side of the road being torn up, um, next week, and hopefully completed, um, in the next month or so. So thank you. And part, as they always say, pardon our dust as we, um, improve our community and the infrastructure in our community. And thank you to AW and DPW, um, for all of their efforts in managing the incredible projects this summer. Um, and then I'd like to, uh, Mayor, if you're okay with it, passing it over to, um, Chief Haynes, as he has an incredible update with the FBI that's coming for tomorrow.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Thank you, city manager. Um, just wanted to, to state real quickly that tomorrow, we're going to have a visit, tomorrow early morning, we're gonna have a visit from the deputy director from the FBI, directly from Washington DC. Um, he will be coming here tomorrow to present several of our East Point police officers with awards, um, for their heroic efforts, um, in the tragic case of Winter Cole Smith, um, that occurred back on July 3rd. So, I don't know that council's fully aware, but our officers were instrumental, um, in safely taking the suspect in that case into custody. And for that, they're going to be, um, given some very nice awards from the FBI, as well as, um, last week, I was able to attend, um, an event at the US Attorney's Office down in Detroit and received awards on behalf of the City of East Point, so.
That's awesome. Yes, sir.
Where is that, that ceremony gonna take place, Chief?
It will be here at City Hall, um, at 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And thank you to the officers who, all the work that they did, have done. We really appreciate that. And also the Detroit police officers as well in connection with the case. It's unfortunate that she had to lose, uh, her child. I don't know, uh, how that feels. I want to know. But continue to pray for that family. Um, city manager-
And I believe, um, St. Clair Shores was also involved, and so their officers will be honored as well, following, um, their visit here in East Point. But with that, Mayor and council, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager at this time? Saying none. We're gonna go to our, uh, finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I have nothing that interesting to talk about.
You, you talk about, you got the money.
Yeah.
You getting any money today?
No, no money today. Uh, no, we're partway through the audit. It's going well. Uh, we're probably about a half day ahead of schedule, which is good. Um, and that's kind of all-consuming this time of year. So I really have nothing else to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Our finance director saying none. Going to our attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening again, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just had one agenda item. I just wanted to address the, uh, gentleman's, uh, presentation during the hearing of the public, uh, regarding the, uh, uh, Nine Mile issue. Um, because the gentleman is represented by legal counsel, and there has been threatened litigation, uh, that matter is being handled solely through our office. Um, I did, uh, I do have an open dialogue with, uh, gentleman's attorney. I did respond to his, his attorney's inquiry back on September 19th, and I let him know that, uh, we were in the process of trying to resolve this matter, and that I was awaiting, uh, revised construction plans from, uh, the city's engineer, Mr. Kern. I am in receipt of those construction plans, and therefore I will be responding to the gentleman's attorney, uh, by the end of this week. So that's where we're at with that. And, um, council's receipt of our monthly status report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney? Saying none. Going to new business approval of the Munitrix contract. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the three-year contract with Munitrix.
Support.
Oh, thank you. Oh, we couldn't, he couldn't hear you. Yeah, microphone isn't on.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve the three-year contract with Munitrix.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kamunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Next item, B, adoption of resolution 23-1969, street lighting special assessment. Counsel? Counsel? Any discussion? Any motion, any support?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, to adopt resolution 23-169 to authorize the continuation of a street lighting special assessment and fund additional streetlights throughout the city.
A second.
Motion and support, any conversation or discussion?
Mayor, yeah, I've got a question.
Counselor.
How are we determining where future, uh, streetlights would go? Um, yeah, like with the capital expenses on this?
Who are addressing that question to?
Say that again?
Who are you addressing the question to?
Uh, city administration, I guess. Ms. Walton or Mr. Blum?
Let me take it. Okay. Um, there was a, a plan probably seven years ago. Uh, we were looking to put additional streetlights mid-block. Um, the plan designated 60 spots in the south- Plan designated 60 spots in the southwest part of the city. The idea is that we would then gradually move throughout the city. That's kind of been the template for what we've been doing with the solar street lighting as CDBG money becomes available and then the money from the street lighting special assessment. So until we actually hit those 60, we haven't really looked at any additional spots, but that was kind of the original plan, was southwest, working our way north and east from there.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just asking because of course this, like you're saying, it's going to be, it'd be a multi-year, well, many, many years, I guess. Like how many, if we do that same plan, you're talking about the 60 throughout the whole city, you know, how many new streetlights do we need? And what's that going to cost?
Yeah, we haven't gone that far again. This was a plan drafted when we thought we were going to add them through DTE at about $2,000 a pole. Now that there are the solar lights that will not be tied into the grid, they're about $15,000. I mean, it's going to take us probably a decade to get through the first 60 before we look at any additional locations. I mean, if council wants to change that up, that's, that's your call, but that was just where administration had started. Like I said, it was about seven years ago, and we're just following through on that original plan until we completed it.
I guess mostly my one thing is just I was wondering if we could discuss about potentially, well, because as Mr. Blum said, there's a lot of them, it'd take a decade even just to do like 60, and that's going to be a lot of money, and this is like a 20% increase from what it is now. And I think we'd have to, you know, continue that same higher rate and maybe even increase it, I guess, depending how fast new lights were installed. What about, and I haven't had time since, you know, since Friday to look too much further into it, but about replacing some lights that we have? Because with adding the additional ones, of course, we're going to have the same lighting bill, and then we're going to also have to pay for new lights. If we replaced some of the lights with the solar lights, if they do like work as well and all that sort of thing, I guess, you know, we'll see soon enough here, we could reduce our bill and then maybe also add more lights throughout the city over time.
It's something we could definitely look at, instead of adding new, just replacing. The only downside of that is we can't use CDBG funding for replacing existing. It's only for new as a crime safety prevention aspect. That's why the CDBG funding is allowed for that. So that would be all out of pocket to replace existing.
Yeah. I think, I guess I'm concerned that if, well, if we do look citywide, you were saying it's about what it was, I was asking if we replaced them all with solar lights, it's like a $20 million project. If right now we're cutting the space in half of where all the lights go, that's another $20 million worth of streetlights then.
Could be over time, absolutely.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the cost of the solar lights will come down. The ones that are being installed now are pretty large and bulky and require steel pole. That's where a lot of the cost is coming from there. We got to look into some alternatives that have lighter battery packs that we could do with a wood pole. It would reduce the cost. So hopefully, this technology evolves and we can get more done with the same amount of money.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of, because this is a path, as you stated, that we have been on going back to a resolution, although really 10 years ago, when council adopted the first resolution to start the special assessment for street lighting. But in terms of the literal dollar amount of increase to residents, we're talking about a $5 increase in the assessment, correct?
No, actually.
Or what is it?
If we don't do the capital, it would be $5 less than proposed. It's a, what do we have, about a $7 increase from the current one?
Okay. For, in a year?
Per year.
Per year, thank you.
Per year, per, per year, per parcel.
Understood. Thank you.
I've got another question on the amounts. I see we had listed that it'd be 2023 winter, 2024 summer, 2025 summer. So really, it's going to be like $120 in a year and a half, when right now we've been paying $34 a year. I guess, so that's a, it's a larger increase, really. I mean, it's $7.32 a year, but that's on top of what we're already paying, the $34 a year just for street lighting, I guess, just to take into consideration.
And we've had it on the summer tax bill, well, since we started it. It just, the special assessment board kind of got missed in the, oh, this expired, we need to meet. If council wishes, it could stay on the winter tax bill for this three years, and then it doesn't cram it all in with a winter bill and then immediately a summer bill. That'd be another option.
Madam Mayor, I would be willing to amend the original motion to include leaving it on the winter bill for the entirety.
I get support?
Is that what you're recommending?
If council wishes. I don't.
Well, council can do anything they want.
That's right, council can do anything they want.
By the way, is that coming from you?
It doesn't matter financially, it's all within the same fiscal year, so.
But it makes it easier for the customer?
Yeah.
Okay, self-support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion?
I guess I just had one comment, if there weren't any other discussions. I guess I was hoping that we could discuss some other ideas on this before voting on it, but it appears maybe that's not going to happen. Because I guess the, over the next two to three years, council will have to vote on, you know, which, you know, on bids for doing all of this, and I guess we'll be collecting this amount regardless then, even if, you know, replacing some lights makes more sense than just adding more lights. Yeah, I guess, just hoping we do a little bit more planning on that, but yeah, I'll be voting no on this then. It's a 21.5% increase over what we have right now. It was originally, yeah, started in 2013 at $31.18, was like that for six years, six or seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then went up to 34.13, and now we're going up to 41.45. As we said, I guess it'd at least have to stay there for a long time if we do add twice as many light poles across the city.
And you said the increase was for what, Mr. Blum? Why the increase from 33 now to 44 for the 30 bracket?
A large reason for the increase is the DTE charges. We had originally projected with the last assessment, a 3% annual increase for compounding of 9.3%. It actually came in at a 21% increase during that timeframe. So we're just, it's still projected at only a 3% increase going forward, but it's just starting at a higher level.
Okay. We can't control that.
Nope. That comes from the Michigan Public Service Commission.
Any more discussion before we do roll call? Saying none, we have motion and support, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, if I may, original motion for street lighting was supported, was motion and support, and then the second motion was to approve it with leaving it on the winter bill. Do I just address the second one?
Yes, because she amended it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamunice.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
No.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Item C 2021 through 2023, concrete repair and miscellaneous street repair program extension, council.
Madam Mayor, I would move to extend the current 2021-23 concrete repair and miscellaneous street repair program, completion date from September 30th to December 31st, 2023, with the, within the original budgeted amount.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion?
I have one item, Madam Mayor. It's not a question, but more of a statement I wanted to make. In the background brief for this one, it states that due to the contractor completing all required work in District 7 under budget, we decided to move on to District 8. Really, I believe it should more be worded that we marked off less concrete than we originally expected and we're moving on. We're still paying the contractor the same amount, so it's not like necessarily that they came in under budget, and I thought it was just important to clarify that.
Any more discussion? Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker? I'm, yes, Councilmember Baker?
I supported, but I didn't make the motion.
Oh, Councilmember Kamunice?
No. Councilmember Curly made the motion.
Councilwoman Curly made the motion. I support it.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
No, Councilmember Kamunice, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
The next item was the approval to proceed with application, but it was removed and replaced with discussion for the city manager to receive a 5% raise increase that aligns with the other directors who received theirs in the last budget amendment, which was put on by myself and for discussion. And the reason I put this on here is because I've witnessed her growth in the city of East Point from, she started as a, what, assistant for the city manager, human resources, then assistant city manager, now the city manager of the city of East Point, and even when she was assistant city manager, she played a phenomenal role, and she started, well, restarted a newsletter for the city of East Point. She revamped the city's website. She has been doing a phenomenal job. One of the major things she did when we were alerted of the water, the lead in the water, I mean, she made it a priority and made sure filters were passed out and everything. The residents who were affected knew firsthand what was going on, and those who were not affected, she also made sure that they had water filters as well. She has started initiatives that the city has not had ever, and made sure she attended those initiatives even when she wasn't paid. She has given suggestions to open new roles in the city of East Point. So if you see new, you know, just for instance, our, who does our PR? Our community engagement? I don't know. We had that before. We had something similar to that, but she has opened roles and positions and hired phenomenal people, and they have been phenomenal with the city of East Point, which has helped us with our image. And she also has done grants and made sure that the city is in a good place, financially stable, you know, with the help of other directors as well. And so if we giving out raises to other directors, I think she should have one too. You know, they work as a team, and the person who leads the team, we got to make sure we take care of her as well. So that is something that I want to discuss and put it on the agenda for next council meeting, if you would, so that we can look at the contract and make sure that the attorney looks at the contract as well to where she's at right now. And hopefully, even if we see the increase in her raise, maybe we might have to make some other adjustments to make sure that she stays with us as long as she can. Counsel, any discussion on this?
Well, first of all, I think it should be in agenda item for next council meeting, and at that point in time in our packet, we'll have a copy of her contract. And, you know, it's a very tricky thing to put something on the agenda the night of the council meeting without any of our things sitting in front of us. And I guess that's why you have, people have two weeks. If they think they want to put something on agenda, as long as they get here the Thursday before the council meeting by 1 o'clock, they can, it would be on our sheet, our agenda. But everything you said about her is true. Everything. And I don't have anything else nice to say about you, but, I mean, that's enough. But, and I don't have a problem with the increase in salary, but I just think it's really a touch and go thing to suddenly wake us up, because I think, I think Rob should get a car, because he rides around the city. But, so let's, that's all I really want to say, but I like it, but I think there's a procedure we really need to follow, and I would like to see, look again how much he's making now and figure out what 5%, maybe 5%, I don't know, maybe that's not high enough. I don't know.
Maybe it's not.
Yeah. So I would say that let's put it on the agenda for next week and make sure, make sure that you give us our information. That's it.
Thank you. Counselman, put in there, Bill Tim.
Yeah, I think that, you know, having some more information in front of us would make it, you know, easier to make a more informed decision, but yes, I, I mean, you've said everything, I don't need to echo it again, but, yes, she has done a phenomenal job. I've seen her not only here at City Hall, but also in get involved and engage with different groups in the community, and that is very, very noteworthy, to get involved and to know what's going on in the community. I think that's a great thing for her to invest her time, even off the clock, to help better our community and to support what we have going on here, so those are my glowing comments. And just for the record, I'm not getting a car, I'm not asking for a car like Harvey said, I don't want anybody starting that rumor. Mine works well enough, so that's it.
Anyone else like to add?
Question for you, Madam Mayor. Are you proposing a 5% bonus or 5% increase in salary?
5% increase in salary, but if you want to add a bonus to it, that's something we can look at too.
Okay.
Because the holidays are coming up. Everybody get a bonus, I feel like Oprah right now, but, yeah.
So I think my belief on this is that we'd have to modify the contract to be able to do this. I don't think we can just pay her an amount outside of the contract, so I think we would need to modify that. And I pulled it up, we, I mean, there's raises built into the contract right now, 2% a year, and then it says during the time of budget review and adoption, we should be, let's see, looking at merit increases. So during the time of budget review and adoption.
I believe the 2% is the cost of living that goes up every year anyway, that has nothing to do with the additional raise that I'm trying to give her. So inflation is even higher even now due to COVID and some other things. So, you know, what she's getting right now is just to catch up with what the increases are, so that, so what we're asking, what I'm asking to give her supersedes that.
I understand that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, part of, part of my concern in this whole discussion, I want to make sure that we are clear, and maybe this is more to be directed at the city attorney, I want to make sure that, I know that there's language in her contract that permits us to discuss a merit increase, but I want to make sure that we're able to discuss that merit increase without going into renegotiation of her contract, both for the protection of Ms. Walton as well as for the protection of the city. And so I would not be in favor unless she were to move forward and say, hey, I want to renegotiate my contract. I would not be in favor of us reopening the negotiation of her contract at this time unless she requested that. So I think a merit increase is definitely in order. If instead of a merit increase, we are looking at a bonus, I would be perfectly fine with that as well, primarily because I think her work in the city of East Point, her leadership even to ensure that this council is properly and appropriately prepared for every meeting, she's outstanding and phenomenal. And I will say unequivocally, I would put her up against any city manager in this state. And if you go anywhere outside of the city of East Point, what you will find is that our city manager is highly respected amongst not only her peers, but across the state of Michigan. And not only is she very educated and very precise in her work within this city, but she she is very dedicated outside of the nine to five. You will catch her at a city cleanup. You will catch her spending time within this community, even though this is not where she resides. And I think that is phenomenal. Not only that, I look at how the peers of individuals feel about those that they work with. And I can say across the board in my time of working with her, that all of her directors, all of her peers speak very highly and have the utmost respect for her. And East Point is very blessed to have such a highly respected, but also very excellent in nature and excellent in execution of her job, to have a leader like that at the helm. So I have no opposition, but I do want to protect both the interests of the city as well as the interests of our city manager.
Right. I would like to go into the contract if we have to. I want to see it, if I want to add addition. I mean, like I said, it's five people up here. Everybody gets a voice. And then I think, since I've been up here for the last six years, I think, going back to Councilman Curly's point, we have always added things on the agenda without conversing with each other. That's something that's been done probably before I was up here and probably when you was the mayor here as well. So this is nothing new. This was only a discussion, and that's exactly what we did, right? So again, I've, I remember when she first sat in the city manager's office, she wasn't even hired yet and just sitting there. I was like, who, what, what are you here for? She was like, I'm here to, you know, for a job. And she was soft spoken like she is now. And I said, do you need some water? She was like, oh, you offer me, you know, she was just surprised and, you know, you know, someone just, just catering to her and, you know, just as, that's just what I do, you know, just be nice to people in general. And I never thought she'd be sitting right next to me. So I thank God for treating people how I want to be treated, because you never know who got to put in your life. That's why you treat everybody right, because you never know who's going to be helping you, you know, and supporting you. You don't know. I don't care. So we have to be careful who we treat a certain way, because you never know. God will surprise you. So saying that, so yeah, we'll put that on the agenda, and we'll overlook that. And you had a lot of good things people said up here, so that's just, that's just who you are, whether it's spoken or unspoken, you know, you don't have anything to prove, but you've proven it anyway. So I thank you for your work, and I thank you for just knowing you. You have been a blessing to East Point. Going to item E, approval for the letter of support to McComb County Commissioners, ten mile west of Grashit resurfacing, council.
I move that we approve the letter of support to the McComb, to McComb County for ten mile street resurfacing.
I, I would support that, Madam Mayor, and also comment that Sarah Lassito had sat down with the appropriate people at the county level and will be trying to put this in their budget. And the cost sharing would be with us and the county and perhaps Roseville, although that's to be discussed by the county. But Sarah did a great job, and she should be committed for that.
Thank you, Councilman Curly.
Support?
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
If we're going to have a discussion. I just, I had a couple of questions. One was with respect to, I know we previously did a cost sharing agreement with McComb County and Roseville for the resurfacing from Kelly to 94 of Ten Mile. And it's my understanding that when we did that previously, the allotment was 50% to the county, 25% to East Point, 25% to Roseville. However, with this particular section of Ten Mile, I don't know how much of a guarantee we have that another municipality would participate. And so my concern is, are we looking at the potential of paying upwards of a minimum of a million of this project? What are we, does anyone know?
Yes, thank you. That is a conversation that we had during the meeting, was essentially, worst case scenario, we would be in a 50-50 cost split agreement with the county, so we would be expected, we estimate the project to cost $2 million, so we were estimating at this point that it'd be $1 million from the city if Roseville was not interested in entering into that agreement.
So to that end, I guess the next question that I would have is, would we have it in major roads if we had to spend that million?
Yeah, that would come out of major streets, and we would have a million dollars available for that project.
What would we be taking away from in order to do that, though?
We have enough money to cover the Nine Mile project. We have no other major projects scheduled in the next couple of years, so it would be taking nothing away.
And then, is it possible, I guess this is a question for administration, is it possible for us in this initial letter to just add language that would say initially, we would support being a part of this up to 25%?
Yes. If council wanted to make amendments to be more specific in the letter, that council would only want to commit to 25% cost sharing, we could certainly make that change in the letter.
Well, before we do that, where did the 50-50 originate from? Was that in some type of resolution or agreement that we made with the county before? I mean, who invented, who invented the 50-50?
So in our conversation with Commissioner Lassito, our understanding is the projects that are completed from the county are typically done in a cost splitting agreement, so similar to the agreement that we had from 94 to Kelly on Ten Mile. And so we had the conversation, I know the hope is that Roseville would come in, but we also have the understanding that there are no Roseville businesses, as there are on the section of Ten Mile that was already done. So our expectation, especially with no federal funding to assist in this work, is that it would likely be 50% from the county and then 50% from the city, in worst case scenario in terms of how much the max that we would spend in a splitting agreement.
Any other discussion? I know we got a motion and support, because you got one amended to the 25%.
Councilman, would you have any opposition to?
I don't think we should limit ourselves. We're going to negotiate.
Well, it's not, it's not so much a limit as, as, I guess, more of a, a starting place for negotiation, so that it would come back before council if it would need to be in excess, if the cost sharing portion allotted to East Point would be in excess of 25%. And that way, the council could have the opportunity to decide if they want to pay 500,000 as opposed to a million.
I know, Councilman.
Yeah. About Councilwoman Camunyis's comments right now, it would, I guess regardless of if, because I, the 25, I liked adding that in, but then I also just pulled up East Point's map and what Ms. Walton said, I, we basically own Ten Mile over there. Roseville's not on the north side, unfortunately. It's going to come, regardless of what we put in the support letter, I guess it'd come to us anyway, I guess. I was going to agree on the 25, but I forgot on that side, we're on both sides. So I think it might be hard to convince Roseville to throw in 25% on a road that's really not in their jurisdiction.
Yeah. It's, and it's purely not, I'm, I'm good either way. It's purely not from the standpoint of trying to force Roseville's hand as much as just saying to the county, this is our starting point, and, and making sure that the council since by then, it'd probably be a different council, would have the opportunity to make an informed decision on spending a million dollars. So it's just the fiscal conservative part of me, but if, if you don't want to amend your motion, I'm perfectly fine with the motion as it is.
Well, I mean, I'll go with what the majority of council wants. I'm, I mean, I don't mind starting at a certain point, but, you know, I was comfortable either way. So if the majority of council wants to leave it as is, I'm cool with it. If everybody wants, if council wants to go 25%, I mean, like Councilman DeMonico said, it's coming back to us anyway. So it seems that we make a determination as to what we're comfortable with. So I don't, I don't know.
Well, one thing is, one thing is for sure. Ten mile road west of Grashit sucks. It's terrible.
It's the worst major road.
It is bad. You better not go over 15 miles an hour down there. I mean, it's, it's a wash bar. So whatever happens, we got the money and, you know, we, well, don't get me started on residential streets, not tonight. But I, I'm satisfied with what the letter, it's an open letter, say, hey, we're ready to sit down and, and communicate with one another and see, see what happens.
Okay. Well, we got motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Camunyis.
Yes.
Item F, reappointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board, council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board as follows. Tanitra Morrison, Class C Closet with the term expiring September 1st, 2026. Lisa Denise Peterson, resident with a term expiring September 1st, 2027. Joseph Solomon, UPS Store with a term expiring September 1st, 2027. And Andrea Troutman, resident with a term expiring September 1st, 2027.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Camunyis.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Payroll and bills, council.
Mayor, I move that we pay the bills in the amount of $4 million, $96,132.63.
Second that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Camunyis.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Next is the hearing of the public. The second hearing of the public is now open. I know you had a part two to your, to your one. Let me get the timer started.
Evening, Mayor, council, and administration. I'm going to start at the beginning. When this thing first came to fruition, it was going to affect Wayne, Oakland, McComb, and Washington counties. They wanted to put the RTA down Michigan Avenue, Woodward, Grand River, and Grashit. Now, the problem is the cost, okay? I prefer having a bus service. The one that we have here, Smart, does a wonderful job. I sat during that time, I sat out on the street and I watched the bus go by. Every 10, 15 minutes, there was a Smart bus. Now, you move in rail service, and you got to lay down rail. And if you decide this isn't a good thing later on, you got, you can't just take the rail up and move it someplace else. And what, what some very rich people did is they put in the M1 service. That's that little rail service that runs up and down Grashit from the new, new center area downtown, okay? Dan Gilbert, DTE, and a few other people, and it slips through my mind, they spent somewhere between 250 million and 300 million putting that in. And they did it to convince all of us what a wonderful thing this is, and we should buy into it, okay? Well, that didn't happen. All three, all four counties would have, would have to okay it for it to pass, okay? McComb, because of Harvey and myself, McComb didn't pass it. There was a gentleman in Oakland County, he fought real hard. It didn't pass there. It passed by a small margin in Washington and in Wayne County. Now, the reason they're coming back is those rich people who have to take care of that rail service down Woodward, they don't want to keep paying, not paying on it. It's a losing proposition. Rail service everywhere just doesn't do well, okay? And like I said, bus service is better. You want to bus, put a bus service down this road, you just put a bus service there. You don't have to put rail down. And it would have, terrible thing if they would have tried to put it in our media. So now, these people who invested all that money in that rail service, M1, down Woodward, they want to make you pay for it. They don't want to pay on it anymore. So they're going to come back and try and convince you to put rail service in so they can get rid of it, okay? It's not a good thing. It's a terrible thing. And.
Time is up, sir.
Yeah. Harvey and I worked on that for a long time, and vote no.
Thank you. Well, anyone else like to speak at this time?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Esther Ariomi Nice. I just want to come up here and say thank you for bringing forth the Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. The, being someone who is Hispanic myself, it's very encouraging to see the city recognize people in the Hispanic community. And it's also great to see people who have fought so hard for their life, who've had breast cancer get recognition. And finally, I just want to say happy belated birthday to Councilwoman Camunyis. Her birthday was on Friday, and that's all. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Anyone else would like to say anything? A happy birthday to our councilwoman. Did you just turn 21, or?
Yes, girl.
Okay. You look 21, so look. Anyone else say none? The second hearing of the public is now closed. Mayor council reports, starting with our birthday girl.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, you know this.
Well, thank you. Thank you to my son. I didn't know he was going to do that, but, but thank you. It is a blessing to be alive and to be in this space in history. I want to just, following up on our proclamations, just encourage everyone, particularly women, but as has already been stated by our mayor, breast cancer is not reserved just for women. Men can experience it as well. So I want to encourage you to make sure that you're doing your self-checks, and then also make sure that you go for those yearly mammogram exams. It is important. It's imperative. And if you don't do it any other month, just late October is your month and make it happen. It literally is not that hard. It's 10 minutes of your time, but it is 10 minutes that can save your life. Also, I, again, just want to thank those East Point residents and East Point stakeholders who came tonight. Thank you again to Mrs. Miles for coming out, and I am, I knew her through the whole journey, so I'm super excited to see her five years post her battle, and I really honor God for keeping her. And then I also want to just encourage everyone to make sure you have created those fire escape plans with your family and that you are using safe practices in your cooking. If your children are learning how to cook, make sure they know where the fire extinguisher is and how to actually use it. Make sure that they, you know, know the difference between, you know, how to appropriately calm down a fire and not to throw water on grease, and all those great things. So just make sure that you're practicing those cooking safety practices that were mentioned by our fire department, so you don't have to have a visit from them. And if for some reason you feel like you're not up to par on your skill set with cooking safety, please visit our fire department. They would be more than happy to educate you. They would rather educate you than come and have to try to pull you out. And then I want to encourage everybody, love on a Latino in East Point this month. You got a few more weeks. Love on somebody from the Latinx community. If you don't know anyone, you can come on over to Juliana. I have at least three in the house that you can love on. I also want to say thank you to our administration, AW and DPW, for just good communication. You recently sent out a notice and posted at each of the homes for those residents who are being affected. for those residents who are being affected by the resurfacing projects and by the driveway improvements. And I just appreciate you keeping good communication with our residents so that they're apprised of what's happening, so that they know that you didn't just stop the work and so that they can be on guard for future work. So, thank you for good communication. Finally, I want to share a quote again from Maria Torres Guzman, my aunt and a very dear friend. She was an amazing, amazing, incredible academic and wonderful person. But she said, "Children need access to all the resources they have in order to learn, and their home languages are a resource." And to that, my favorite author says, "Don't you see that children are God's best gift? The fruit of the womb, His glorious legacy? Like a warrior's fistful of arrows are the children of a vigorous youth." That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll start out, I guess, with the RTA. Couple of comments on the RTA. When that was up for vote here, I wish it would have been light rail. It was not light rail for Grashit, though. It was going to be fast buses. I ended up voting no on it because it wasn't light rail. I wanted it to be light rail. They were going to put it on the other roads, you know, on Woodward and Michigan, I believe it was. But here, we were just going to get the rapid transit buses. This other, the letter we just wrote, though, was not about anything like that. It's about improving what we have already, is what that letter was for. I hope they come forward with a better plan than last time. I certainly think the Metro Detroit area needs a better transit overall, for sure. We do not have good transit in Metro Detroit in general. So, lots of good events in the city lately. And I want to give some shout-outs to some great residents. We have some wonderful volunteers on our commissions. And the Beautification Commission especially, they've been keeping very busy. They did an electronics recycling event, again, up at the DPW. So, I want to thank Craig Wodecki and Joe Marucci for putting that together with resident Mike Wiley. He's the one that does the recycling and he also lives in East Point. And all the commission members that came out, Rachel Sullivan, Pam Russell, Paul Colby, Kevin Murphy, Dorothy Stover. And then, I want to give condolences to Lakita Cobb and her family. She would have been there, but she had a loss in her family. So, please keep her in mind. And then, Siney Merle, also on the commission. She wasn't able to make that, but she's at everything else. So, I just want to give her a shout-out too because she's a great volunteer. And then, at Spindler Park with the Parks Commission, sorry if I'm stealing your fire on that one, Mr. Baker. That was a great event. Also, we have another thing at Spindler Park, like we've got the walking story path that was just open. So, now, we threw in a couple cornhole boards and they are cemented into the ground. So, they won't walk away on us, first of all. And second of all, you can just bring some bags up and go play up at Spindler Park next to the horseshoes now. And just again, like, want to thank everyone, like Gary Sasek, the Chair of our commission, the DPW and the Parks Commission in general, Alex Stokes, Betty Bishop, Linda Flans, De'onda Easley, they were all there. Adam from Rare. I know I'm going to miss someone, sorry. But there were so many people out there putting a lot of time in. The city's putting a lot of time in for some good things like that and like the electronics recycling. And then, as the city manager said earlier about salute to excellence, they did blast it on Facebook, so I'm going to also blast out right now. But just real quick, business of the year, fusion marketing in East Point. We had Andairis as the pioneer award, Love Life Family Christian Center, and Justine Smith for the You've Made a Difference Award. AEW, Mr. Kern, you've got the You've Made a Difference, East Point, Roseville Award. Or wait, do I have? I have that on here twice now. Well, you're both winning awards. Maybe I have the title wrong on one of these now that I'm looking at this. Educators of the Year, Lisa James, Suzanne Booth, Matthew Ostrowski, Student of the Year, Talia Butler, Police Officer of the Year, as mentioned earlier. We've got our Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year, right from our very own city here, of course, Detective Marcel Prude and Lieutenant Matthew Layer from the Fire Department. And then, Citizen of the Year, and she was very happy. She came to the cornhole dedication. Betty Bishop bragging to everyone that she is the Citizen of the Year for the salute this Thursday. And Ambassador of the Year, Maureen Leets. So, clearly, there's a lot of great people in our community and it takes a lot of people to run a wonderful city. So, just thank you to everybody that puts in time, especially a lot of these people. It's unpaid volunteer time. So, if you're also interested in helping out in our non-current commission, let us know. Put in a application. And then, just two quick event shout-outs. Beautification Commission's doing another litter cleanup at the end of the season this time for the first time Saturday, October 14th, 11:00 to 1:00. Meet near the vacant Old Bank at Nine Mile and Beacons Field, if you're interested. So, come out again October 14th. It's Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then, if you're interested in helping with the Veterans Day event that we do in the community, that'll be 6:00 p.m. at the Military Museum on Monday, October 16th. And that is everything. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
You didn't miss anything?
I don't think so. You want me to try and find?
No. Because I know you could.
Try to talk a little faster.
I know you could, though. Thank you for that information. Councilwoman Curly?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. If I recall correctly, at our last meeting, we voted to send a letter to RTA. But part of that discussion was that we wanted them to send us some information of what they were going to do. We haven't received that yet, have we?
We have not. We did receive a response from RTA and they're planning to get that over to us. The council should have a copy soon.
A copy soon. The opt of word is soon, right? We really don't know when we're going to get it. But anyway, with Walter and I doing what we did, forget about, you know, if you liked it or you didn't like it. But the point is, this is America and when you set your mind to it, you can do amazing things. You can do amazing things. You really can. Okay, I'm going to talk trash now. Now, if you put your grass clippings in a bag, you don't have anything to worry about. But if you put your grass clippings in a trash can, here it comes. And you put it out in front and the garbage people come out and they pick it up and they dump it into their thing and they take it and they put it upside down in front of your house, don't they? Yes? They put it upside down. And what happens to that? You go out and you take the can and right there is a little pile of gooey, smelly Grashit, grass. I don't understand. And I'm going to ask the administration to call them and say, "Hey, don't do that anymore." And who wants, now, you can either leave it there or you can go to your garage and get a broom and sweep it up. You can do that. Or you can leave it there. But I think that's, I don't know why they turn it upside down. I'm not blaming the driver. They were probably told to do that. And you can ask that question, too. Are the drivers told to put it upside down? I don't know. But so, anyway, that's my trash for the evening. And thanks for coming. Lot of good stuff, lot of good people, lot of sincere people. And remember, East Point, no better place to live. And I'll say amen.
I believe that's all I mean there. Mayor?
Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you. All right, I would like to echo the sentiments expressed for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Cancer has impacted a lot of families and I'm sure probably everyone in some shape, form or fashion. So, to those that have overcome and shared that with us tonight, we are glad to celebrate that with you. To those that may be battling, our thoughts go out to you and prayers for you that you can make it through this battle. So, I just wanted to echo those same sentiments. Happy belated birthday, councilwoman. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Again, happy belated birthday, councilwoman. And also, all the proclamations that were set forth today was needed. People need to be acknowledged for the work that they do. And a lot of times, people are not. I like to give people flowers while they're alive and not tell them or say sentiments at their death and they can't hear me or give them flowers on their grave that they can't smell. So, again, to the fire department, to also the police department, for people that lead communities and people, and also our veterans, for everyone that gave their life and their time for people they don't even know. And also, to the breast cancer survivors, you know, I'm glad, you know, that God led you to be here with us today and read that for us. I really appreciate that. Speaking of women-led cities, I was invited by the United Nations. They had a conference a couple weeks ago in New York. And I was very proud to be asked and represent the women-led cities program that they started there. It was phenomenal, actually. I was invited by the United Nations through the mayor. She's the first woman mayor of Benjou Gambia in Africa. And I was happy. I've talked to her through the mayor's initiative that I've been a part of for the last four years. And we talked about as women in that room about the things that we were challenged with, you know? And I was amazed of the things that we all had in common, you know? And it was just hurtful that you see all these women from all over the country dealing with the same thing. But what I was happy about, they found a safe space for us to go to and talk about these things. And, I mean, it was so phenomenal to see people of different backgrounds, races, coming from all over the country to make sure that the United States is in a better place, economically, socially, in so many other ways. And so, and they surprised me because they asked me to be a speaker. And then, the next day of the breakfast, they asked me to be a speaker as well. And I was actually sitting at the table with leaders from all over the country. I was also able to be at the table with the First Lady of Brazil. And of course, they had to translate her wording and what I had to say. And she talked about how she gets harassed and bullied and things like that. And she was just there for support. And just to be, like I said, able to be a woman and leading a community as well alongside of me, councilwoman, and then also our city manager, Ms. Holman, and our community engagement person, just have women in leadership is phenomenal. You all do not know the things that are challenging for us each and every day. And I want to also make note and won't be ashamed or put it aside that Ms. Walton is the first African-American councilwoman in the city of East Point. And I don't even know if... City manager. I'm sorry. Might be a councilwoman, I don't know. I don't know if she wants to after the stuff she seen me go through. But first African-American city manager in the city of East Point and probably in Macomb County. And it's not a lot of women city managers. I know that. And it's not a lot of African-American besides that city managers. So, you have been phenomenal to do the things that you have done when sometimes you don't have the mentorship and you deal with the backlash and things like that, not just as a woman, but as African-American woman. And I want to make sure I acknowledge that and give you your flowers while you're still here and while I'm still here and tell you how proud I am, not only for you, but all the women who lead cities all across America. And like I said, I was the only mayor in the United States that was representative. So, I was happy to represent my community and let them know the things that I have challenged. And they were, you know, they felt bad. And also, the mayor who had struggles through her second term, the mayor of Gambia, she told me she barely got her second term because of the things that she was dealing with. And of course, I could feel her, you know? And she cried and she gave some gifts to the First Lady of Brazil. And we all hugged. And it was just phenomenal that you have women that support each other all across the world. So, just want to say that. So, you are supported. So, women, just, you know, we have to support one another. We might not agree all the time, but we have enough against us. So, I want to let you know as your mayor, I support you in all that you do and continue to be successful, no matter where you come from, what you look like, because you can do it. And so, I said that to say we are going to... No, let me thank everybody else for coming out again. And everything that all the council has said, you know, I tagged that, too. So, again, thank you for coming out. God bless you. Councilman Curly?
So moved for adjournment.
Adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb-Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Me in adjourned. Have a good night.